The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike. We'll call Siana. Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Losi.
Here.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Here.
Mayor Protem Trent.
Here.
Mayor Long.
Here. Thank you, Siana. We have a few presentations and introductions tonight. Our first one is introduction of Conference Center Manager, Conference Center Manager Jennifer Lorenzo.
Am I coming through okay?
You are.
Okay, perfect. Good evening, City Council. It's Cameron Mall, Parks and Recreation Director. So Jennifer started with us. You all probably recognize her. She started with us as the River Lodge Conference Center Coordinator under the previous manager who had resigned. And so we did some extensive recruitment and interviews for the manager position since COVID restrictions were starting to open up and we wanted to get that position filled. And Jennifer really shined through as the ideal candidate to take over that position as the Conference Center Manager. Jennifer is highly organized. She's really proven herself as the coordinator over the last year and a half. She also, if you've ever met Jennifer, know that she has impeccable hospitality and people skills and will definitely go out of her way to accommodate user groups and renters at the River Lodge. So we're really happy to announce her as the manager. And she takes a lot of pride in her position as well. She takes a lot of pride in ensuring that the River Lodge is well-kept and aesthetically pleasing for all our user groups. So without further ado, I hope Jennifer's with us, but I'll let her say a few words.
I think she might be coming back on right now. She was on, I'm sorry, before you started, Cameron, and it looks like she just, she was trying to connect to audio and it looks like a new phone number came on, so she might be connecting right now.
Okay.
Jennifer, are you on? Cameron, why don't you go ahead and introduce your next one and we'll circle back.
Sounds good because I see Emily's here. So I also wanted to introduce our new recreation program supervisor, Emily Apadaka, who's here with us tonight. So we had some really strong candidates for this position. If City Council recalls, we brought that position back from a part-time into a full-time position and started our search for candidates and we had some really strong candidates, but Emily really shined as the strongest candidate. Emily is originally from San Jose, California, went to Humboldt State University and got her degree there in wildlife management. And from there, she moved to Willets and she worked for both Willet's Charter and Willet's Elementary Charter Schools where she was a teacher and specifically she founded the physical education programs there and really developed those programs. They did not, those programs did not exist prior to her being there. She was also the after-school program director at Willet's Charter School. And additionally, she worked for the Boys and Girls Club of the Redwoods here in Eureka and kind of did some outdoor adventure activities for youth through that program. And you know, we kind of threw Emily into, into the fire since Summer Funny Kitty Camp had already begun when she started. And you know, the summer's been a little bit chaotic with being understaffed and still having quite a few COVID regulations. But she jumped right in with her feet on the ground and has really proven herself and adapted pretty quickly and is really focused in on that program and trying to improve that program. And then, of course, we plan to, once that program is completed, to really expand our recreation programs as a whole and improve our existing recreation programs. So I'm really happy to have her here and she's doing a great job so far. So I just wanted to introduce Emily as our new recreation supervisor. So I think Emily has a few things she'd like to say.
I mute myself. I just wanted to say I am very much enjoying my position so far. I'm in the process of moving into a new house in Willet, or in, let's know, in Fortuna. And just in general, the city's been a nice change. I'm enjoying the move as a whole. I definitely have been kept on my toes so far with the summer program, but I'm having a lot of fun and really enjoying kind of building more of my PE and wildlife background into kind of what we're doing with our programs with the summer camp and look forward to doing more of that across the board with the recreation programs. Happy to be here.
Thank you. Welcome, Emily. Jennifer Lorenzo, if you would like to say a few words, Cameron introduced you, but we did not get to see you yet.
So Jennifer, if you can hear me, try hitting star nine on your keypad. I can see your telephone number on, in the queue and I can see you raised your hand, but if you hit star nine, it should unmute your phone so we can hear you.
Looks like she's still connecting.
Yeah, she shows on participants, but I'm not sure why we can't get her.
I can see that she's in probably with the laptop and trying to connect. Her phone's on here and her hand is raised. So I know she could probably hear us, but I think it's just sometimes unmuting the phone can be challenging.
All right. Let's go to the introduction of our new sergeant and we'll circle back to Jennifer as soon as she can connect. Chief Day, that's you.
Thank you, Mayor Long. Good evening, Mayor and Honorable City Council. Tonight is my absolute distinct pleasure to introduce the newest member of the Fortuna Police Department. We are excited to introduce Sergeant Joshua Finney. Sergeant Finney was actually sworn in by Mayor Long on Monday, July 26th. And just a little about Josh, prior to his career in law enforcement, in 2003, Sergeant Finney enlisted in the United States Navy and served aboard a guided missile cruiser. The name of the cruiser was the USS Antietam after the Civil War battle. He served as an operations specialist and while enlisted, Sergeant Finney coordinated the tactical data link for the Pacific Fleet. He did this during three separate deployments and provided a real-time battle picture to the command staff and to the US Pentagon. Sergeant Finney was honorably discharged from the Navy as an E5 in 2007 and was the recipient of the Navy and Marine Corps Achievement Medal. Following in his father's footsteps, Sergeant Finney started a career in law enforcement. In 2008, he graduated from the 103rd Police Academy at the College of the Redwoods. Sergeant Finney started his career here with us here at the Fortuna Police Department in 2008 and worked for the city of Fortuna until approximately 2013. At that time, Sergeant Finney was hired by the Arcata Police Department where he worked until he was promoted to the rank of police sergeant in 2018. So I just wanted to add a little personal twist here. I spoke a lot with Sergeant Finney's former chief of police. One of the things that resonated with me was that Sergeant Finney was known and had a very good reputation for excelling in his, his tasks and duties and he was constantly taking on assignments which required increasing levels of responsibility. So I can tell you that Sergeant Finney is happy to be home. Him and I have had the opportunity to talk on a couple of different occasions now and his intention is to finish his career where he started here in Fortuna. Away from work, Sergeant Finney enjoys hunting and fishing, snowboarding, wakeboarding and swimming. And he enjoys spending time with his family and friends and has a very strong sense of family and community. I know that Sergeant Finney will be an enormous asset to this department and to the community. And I would just ask that you join me in welcoming Sergeant Finney. We are very pleased to have him. I will turn it over to Josh if he has a few comments.
Hello, everybody. I would like to say that I greatly appreciate the opportunity to once again serve this community and assist Chief Day with what I have learned in bringing this department forward as police around the county and country transition. I'm excited to be here and I'm ready to hit the ground running.
Welcome. We appreciate you being here too. And I do remember when we had you swearing in that you said you were going to finish your career in Fortuna. Don't forget.
He did say that, Mayor.
I know. There are several.
We'll hold him to it.
Higher, but we'll. Thank you, Mike.
All right. Did we ever get a connection with Jennifer?
We did not.
Okay. Well, let's move on to administrative citations program implementation, implementation 2021 by Chief Day.
Siana, may I share my screen?
You can.
I don't know. Is that, is that visible or?
Not yet, Chief, but I think Jennifer just got on. Are you there, Jennifer?
Yes.
Yay, success.
Oh, so I missed everything that was said earlier. I apologize. I get the feeling that Idaho hates Californians so much that they won't even let me access their, their remote emails and such. I just can't get into anything. I apologize once again. So this is my introduction. Thank you very much, Cameron. I missed what you had said. But I just wanted to thank all of you for giving me this opportunity to be the River Lodge manager. I am so excited about getting things up and running again and getting back some of the revenue that we've lost over the past month with COVID and hopefully things keep going at a positive pace and we can do just that. So thank you once again. I'm glad I finally got through and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
You too. So Chief, did you figure out screen yet?
Oh, I'm really giving it my best effort here. Let me see.
Something's changing. There we go.
Is there a PowerPoint up there?
There is.
All right, we're ready to go. Thank you, Mayor. And again, good evening, Mayor Long and Honorable City Council. This evening I have a brief presentation, an update on program implementation for the city's administrative sites. So back on April 6, 2020, City Council passed and adopted Resolution 2020-10. This resolution established the authorization for establishing a schedule of fees and charges and for the utilization of administrative citations. Upon passing the resolution, staff reviewed the current criminal and traffic citations already being utilized by the Fortuna Police Department. Primarily, the citation was examined for its potential and capability to be used in administrative situations. It was ultimately determined that the current criminal traffic citation could not be modified or utilized for these purposes due primarily to the requirements of Section 109030 of the Fortuna Municipal Code. If you direct your attention to the current slide, certain requirements such as fine amounts, the description of the fine payment process and other requirements which are actually highlighted, highlighted in the red font were missing from the standardized criminal traffic citations already being used by the police department. So as a result, staff began working collaboratively with the Independent Business Forms Incorporated to design administrative citations specific to the city, which would comply with all requirements of the Fortuna Municipal Code and which would also be versatile enough to be utilized across a large spectrum for most city departments. Independent Business Forms, Inc. is a well-known, dependable company which the Fortuna Police have already been utilizing for some time for the manufacture of regular criminal and traffic citations. As pictured here, these new administrative citations will be used to address cannabis violations and a broad spectrum of health and safety code violations as well as business code violations. In instances where the municipal code allows for corrections of violations, in those circumstances, these administrative citations have been designed to accurately document time parameters for offenders to make the recommended corrections. So to reemphasize in a nutshell, the new design for these administrative sites will comply with the requirements of the municipal code. It will also create a multi-use tool for cannabis, building code and health and safety violations. They will provide a platform for easy case management and are considered industry-specific tool for California cities. There is a minimal cost associated with design and procurement of the new administrative citations. The city will pay approximately $250.52 per 1,000 citations, which will come from the city's general fund. This cost is extremely manageable when considering the city's $1,000 per day fine associated with illegal cannabis grow operations. Staff is also currently exploring collection alternatives for those who purposely choose not to pay their fines. The Phoenix Group has been used by the police department in the past for parking violations. The Phoenix Group specializes in fine recovery for not only parking, but also in administrative matters and contracts with numerous California cities. Locally, Eureka and Arcata are already utilizing the Phoenix Group services. So that concludes my brief presentation and update on administrative citation implementation. And I'm available for any questions that the council may have.
Is anyone from the council having questions for Chief?
I have one. Are these citations that the code enforcement officer can issue?
Absolutely. They, they can be issued by code enforcement, the building department, the police department. The overarching goal was to design something that, you know, could be used in, by multiple departments within the city.
Anyone else have questions? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Chief. We'll move on to update on the 2021 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG application and other potential Department of Housing and Community Development applications. And Jen Brown.
Hi, can you hear me? Am I here?
Yes, you are.
Can I share my screen, Siana?
Yes, you should be able to.
Okay. Thank you, honorable mayor and city council members. I'm excited to give you a staff update on our 2021 CDBG application and a potential PLHA allocation application. My titles are terrible. There's a lot of acronyms, but we're going to have fun. So the first thing I'm going to talk about is our Community Development Block Grant, Plot Grant application that we're currently working on. So program income is any income over $35,000 generated by CDBG funds. And that money is required to be spent on eligible CDBG projects. So we are required to spend this program income money. Currently, this is the most current balance is $863,893. And HCD really like the Housing, Department of Housing and Community Development really likes to see $35,000 or less in your program income bucket because that shows that you're consistently spending them. So the city of Fortuna decided to do a program income-only ADA barrier removal project. And it was approved by the council on April 5th to not exceed $830,000. It's going to have 13 improvement sites, including the Fortuna Library, City Hall, rodeo grounds and the new Fortuna Bike Park. So here's the locations. These are still rough estimates on the costs and the notes. There's sidewalks, but there's also a lot of other stuff in this package and it is a pretty big ADA package. So it's been a few years since the city's, you know, put together its own CDBG application. And during the application process, staff has discovered several new expectations that were adopted in the 2017 CDBG redesign. They completely, you know, updated their, their program and made a lot of changes, including project readiness requirements and or shovel-ready requirements. So we discovered that our capital improvement project for the ADA must be bid and spec ready and ready to be released for a construction bid within 30 days of the standard agreement from CDBG. So we were not at that point. We've been doing a lot of work for the past months, but we, creating this plan would be a lot of work. So staff is moving forward to make our project shovel-ready by procuring, using a procured consultant to put the bid in spec together. And that is an eligible pre-award activity delivery cost. So that will be included in this CDBG budget. So although the project readiness component was delayed a little bit with this, with updates and some requirements that are needed. What's nice is our program income-only application is not, the NOFA deadline doesn't apply to it. We can turn in a program income application anytime. So if you did see on that NOFA, the due date was May, in May, that's not going to be applied to us. So we're still good to move with this project. And even though we're a little bit behind, we do believe that we can finish this project this year. So these deliverables here, these are the August deliverables and these are the big threshold requirements that staff has been working on since the very beginning of this project. So the Community Development Department has been working on the NEPAS for the Administrative and Project Environmental Review. They've also been preparing the state objectives self-score. I've been working with the Public Works Department on the project narrative and the task and deliverables component, which is actually pretty larger than we expected. And I'm working with Siana on the language assistance plan and we'll be bringing that up to the city council at the next, the next meeting. And that's again, another redesign, you know, update. But these are really, you know, these are huge pieces and after we get the plans back, really the, but finalizing the budget will be the last really big component. So once we get those plans, we'll be good to move forward with it. So I think it's going really well. Staff, you know, everyone's been working really hard on it and I appreciate everyone's involvement on it. So it's continuing and it's going pretty well. So that's my conclusion of where we are at with their CDBG application. Like I said, we're hoping to have it turned in by the end of the year. So the next project, the next thing to be discussed is the permanent local housing allocation program. So the state of California SB2 Building Homes and Jobs Act created the Building Homes and Jobs Trust Fund and the PLHA program. The principal goal of the PLHA program is to make funding available to eligible local governments in California for housing-related projects and programs. On May 3rd, 2021, the PLHA Notice of Funding Availability announced the release of $304 million for funding year 2020 and $38.4 million in unclaimed 2019 funds available, available for eligible local governments. The PLHA NOFA is an allocation of funds. It's not a competitive grant application. There is currently a PLHA competitive NOFA, but staff is not looking at that at this time. So the city is eligible for this allocation of funds. 2019's allocation that's been allocated to us is 108,619. And for 2020, it's 171,840. So all of this is for housing, housing-related activities. So the total for this NOFA we could have is 280,459. It's a five-year program. It's 2019 through 2023. So the complete estimated funding we're going to receive if we applied for this grant would be $651,715. 5% is allowed for general administration. So you can apply for this grant. So for this NOFA, it would be 14. And overall, for the five years, the city would be allotted $32,000 for the, for the administration of this grant. So some general information, this is the second year of a five-year plan. It's open to existing and new applicants. The first time you could apply for this was actually last year. So this is very new program. You can fund one or more eligible activities with this funding and, like I said, you get 5% admin and you also get supplemental funding for activity costs like that program income, activity delivery consultant. That's an example of what we would get. And also any pre-award admin work can be reimbursed with that grant. And this is, the deadline is December 31st, 2021. And the examples were included in Exhibit B of the PLHA NOFA on page three. But pretty much any eligible related activity is going to result in the development, rehab or preservation of housing or rapid housing or homelessness, rehousing. So what I'm understanding from this NOFA is the city has four options. So option one is Fortuna can apply for the PLHA NOFA and commit to the five years and more of monitoring and compliance expectations. Option two is we can, we can give a full delegation of our funds to a neighboring jurisdiction. And then we relinquish, we relinquish all of our responsibility of the application, but we, you know, we can't use that funds anymore. We gave it to, we could give it to Humboldt County or another city. Option three, we could do a sub-grant, a portion of allocation to another entity, but the city would remain accountable for the compliance. That would be like a sub-recipient like RCA, for example, for a redevelopment project. And the fourth option is we take no action and there's no penalty for that. It's just the unclaimed allotted funds return to the Building Homes and Jobs Trust Fund. From our preliminary review, staff is recommending with these funds, if we, if the council is interested in applying for this, is a homebuyer down payment assistance program with low-interest forgivable loan down payment for eligible homebuyers. Again, we'd have to manage the program, so we'd have to consider that. But this application allows an AMI of 120% and it sounds really weird, but what that means is, so here's the area median income for four people, for a four-person household in Humboldt County. This is the median income. 120 means we can help people in the moderate income. So we can go from extremely low all the way to moderate. So these are all of the potential beneficiaries of this, of that down payment assistance program, which is one option. Some other potential ideas could be a minor or major rehab for affordable rentals. I think that would be a little hard with 651. That sounds like a lot of money, but it's not for redevelopment. A lot's involved. We could use it for rental assistance or mortgage assistance and also ADA improvements to owner-occupied or multifamily housing. So it is a little confusing. This is 2019. This was last year. This is the first year of the five-year program. And each year, if you apply the first year, you apply every year and you turn in your reports and then you get your allocation for the following year. And then each year has a different expenditure deadline. So you'd have to plan your project on, based on when you're going to have that money and then when that money needs to be spent. So again, this is a, you know, I put this little thing on the top here. This is just a preliminary review of the PLHA program. We didn't know about this actual NOFA until two weeks ago. So there's been a lot of research and looking into it. I've been talking to Jennifer Dart, Arcata's Deputy Director of Community Development. She's actually the one who alerted us to this opportunity. And we've been talking about potential ideas and what's going to be required from this application. They didn't apply last year, but Arcata is applying this year. So a lot of cities are jumping in, just realizing that this money is available. I'm working with the city manager and the finance director on what's going to be involved in the potential financial monitoring requirements and, you know, if staff can handle, handle that threshold. I do think it could be a benefit, a benefit to the community. I mean, it's allotted funding. It will take staff time. And additionally, the CDBG program is a complete separate program. So you'd have to create a budget fund line for the PLHA fund and any program income from the PLHA and the general admin funds have to come from that and not the CDBG. So there's a little bit of things that have to be done. But we wanted to bring it to the council as it came to our attention and allocation NOFAs are a lot easier to get than competitive. And this one seems doable. And this one seems doable. But again, we're still looking into it, and I'm sure that we'll have more information later. And with that, I can open it up back to the council. And Merritt might want to, you know, add anything else to this presentation. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Jen. I'd just like to add for the council that this is one of the reasons that we brought Jen on as Economic Development Specialist. We wanted to take advantage of some of the CDBG funding opportunities that were out there. And so I don't think, you know, we're not asking for the council for any specific items tonight. But what we're really trying to do is look at the different opportunities for uses of this funding, you know, and, and trying to take up a program that's not going to overwhelm staff. There's a lot of reporting requirements, but right now we're keying in on a couple of things with these monies. And one of them is the home buy, the first-time homebuyers program because the real estate market is so difficult. And then also if we can, we can divert that to, say RCA, who owns a number of multifamily houses that need rehabilitation or multifamily dwellings in Fortuna that need upgrade. We really want to keep it simple and try to spend the money in a concise way. And I just wanted the council to know that, you know, we are leveraging Jen's position from here on to obtain more grant funds. And I wanted you to get a sense of some of the ideas that we're looking at. But again, we're not asking for a decision or any kind of direction tonight. We just wanted to bring this program to your attention and let you know that we're working on it and may bring something back. And we'd be happy to have any feedback that the council may have.
Does anyone have any questions for either Merritt or Jen?
I have a couple. On the CBDG money, how often and how much is that? Like it built up over time to 830,000 or whatever the balance is, right? 863. How long did it take to build up to that? How fast does it replenish? What other programs can we look at to use that money moving forward?
Yeah, Councilmember Stanfield, what, what, the way you build that program up is by applying for more of these grants or from CDBG and then making those loans to folks who either want to make improvements to their houses or when you loan money to somebody who's participating in one of those programs, they pay it back over time. And then that comes back to the city for use through the program income. So it really depends on how many of these applications you're putting out there and what kind of programs you're implementing. If we don't do any new projects, we're going to see zero coming back into program income. But what we have that's been building our program income is, is home loans that were used by people who met the income criteria to upgrade their home and do different types of improvements, whether it's energy efficiency or just other home improvements. And so those have been paid back over time, and that's why we've accumulated so much.
And I can add to that as well. You know, it's like staff, you know, you have to have staff time to apply for these CDBG applications. And, you know, maybe years ago, we had more staff and the city was applying for CDBG funds. And then they got the funds, like Merritt said, they got the loans repaid, and that's the accumulation. I think Erin would know really how much it's accumulated. I think it looks that this last quarter was like 16,000 added for interest. So we are behind, but with this application, clearing that money out is going to put us in a good place with CDBG. And then we can apply for future funding. We could, I think each NOFA, you could get 1.5 million dollars. And if we got, did another revolving loan fund, for example, we would continue to grow the program income.
What are other, what are other uses of those monies? Like if we wanted to sidewalk all of Riverwalk or Riverwalk, is that something that could be eligible? Or, you know, how do we beautify, make Fortuna a desirable place to develop? Those kind of things.
Now, we really just have to look at each time funds are available. They, they have a list of different types of projects. So Jen gave you a subset of the list of projects for the, so each, each notice of funding availability has the different types of projects attached to it. So we looked at, I think there were eight in the, the notice of funding availability that Jen summarized. And there was four of them that really just didn't fit. And so I think there was a handful of them that she presented that we could go for. So we really have to look at the kind of menu that is included with each funding application. But program income is a little more open. You can use that for barrier removal and sidewalk projects, but.
You can use it for sewer and yeah. So, so that's, that's the plan is, you know, watching these NOFAs with the redesign, which I was talking about every, every January annually, the CDBG NOFA is released. So the city can kind of plan, you know, looking at the guidelines and seeing what possible projects would be eligible. And the city really should plan way before that NOFA. So it's not like us right now with this program income project, you know, we have to get the consultant or whatever. But if you had a long time to prepare, it would be more streamlined. We're getting there, I think.
Yeah, it's, it's something I'm really excited about. And I'd like to see a workshop type of, to see that menu of options so that we can kind of be proactive and make in Fortuna better.
I think that's a good idea. Before we consider submitting application, we'd be happy to bring that back in workshop.
One other question regarding the down payment assistance. Do you have an application that you can use from another, another agency? And is there an underwriting that has to occur? Is that going to be your responsibility? Is that, how are you going to manage the underwriting of who's eligible?
That's a great question. Like I said, I learned about this like less than two weeks ago, and this stuff's really complicated. So I'm not sure. We're, we're still looking into it and staff is looking at it. And then when we have more information, you know, that's what Erin and I were talking about this afternoon is what, how, what, how are we going to do this in the finance department? Like, but like I said, Jennifer Dart from Arcata, she's super helpful. They have a rent, a homebuyer assistance program already that they did through Home. And she sent us all the documents. And then she says she can help us and, you know, give us any information that we need. So we're kind of going with that and then doing other research.
And would that money also be available for, say, developer rebates to develop projects?
You can, that's, that was the, you can give your money like a sub-recipient. So if we wanted to give it to someone else to be a sub-recipient, however, you do have to go through an RFQ, I believe, for the procurement of that person.
And, and any potential, say, if you were giving it to a developer who's going to develop multifamily housing, then you'd have to put deed restrictions and rent restrictions on that. You know, other options are the city owns some, some properties that are designated for, for low-income housing. And so we could put out RFPs and develop those properties. But again, the more complicated the project, the more staff time. So it becomes a pretty big commitment. And with only $650,000 in this particular NOFA, it's, it's kind of a big reach and a lot of staff time to put something like that together. So that's one of the things that, that we took off the table for now, just because there's, there's not enough to move forward with those projects. But it, for a bigger application, we might consider that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Couple of questions. Jeremy asked a couple of them that I had. But in speaking about the a, the PLHA, the housing, I'd, I'd like to see workshops with regard to that with those options like Jeremy was talking about. But we, it looks like we're running up against a deadline of December 31st of 2021. Hopefully, if that is in fact the deadline, we probably have to jump on it.
And Councilmember Lozey, another good, you know, I didn't list this option, but you can apply the following year. So this isn't the only chance, the five-year program. It is assumed if there's any remaining 2019 funds, it'll just keep rolling over and same with 2020, 21. So if we're not ready, we could just wait and then look into it to next year. So there are some options. I would like to lead a workshop. I'm still learning about this right now, so I would need some time to learn. But there is a lot of information available from HCD that we could provide too.
Okay, and, and maybe you just answered two of my other questions with, with regarding to the expenditure deadlines. For instance, on the first-time homebuyers, then any unused funds would just be extended into the, into the next year?
So some of that, so that you saw the expenditure deadlines, how each one had a different deadline. You'd have to make sure that that 2019, 2020 funds are spent first. And then, you know, because whatever is not finished by that end of the deadline, expenditure deadline, that was at the far right of that table, goes back into the fund. So then you have to return it to the fund.
So we basically lose that then?
Yeah. So that's the other thing we're asking, we're asking Jennifer Dart is we're not really sure how much money we should put into the down payment assistance. She said they get about four applicants per year that actually qualify. They have to be a certain income and they have to be approved for a housing loan. And as you all know, houses are very expensive right now. So it's really hard for low to moderate income persons or really anybody to buy anything right now. So we might not want to put all that money into that because maybe we, we wouldn't be able to get it out to the community.
So we could have several different options and run several different programs.
You could, the HCD recommends that you don't, you maybe do two activities on this because it's, you have to track each activity and have a plan for each activity and monitoring for each activity. So you don't want to overstretch your staff too.
Okay, I, I think if the council's interested, we really should bring it back in a workshop because there's a lot of what ifs, there's different types of programs. And our hope was to kind of put this information out there. It sounds like the council is interested, maybe digging into this and weighing in on which type of program that you'd like to see. So we, we can schedule that for a workshop in the, in the near future if you'd like.
I think that'd be great. And, and then I have one other question with regard to the CDBG block grant. It looks like we've got 863 some thousand dollars, but our projects only come up to 831. So it's 32,000 some odd dollars left over. So does that just get rolled over as well?
Yes, yeah. So the, the HCD wants 35,000 for you to be eligible to apply and participate for other programs. However, you, that 33,000 we're going to have left over will probably accumulate some interest, right? So what we can do, if we do a future CDBG application, we can apply the program income part, as part of that application and use that money for that program and stay eligible with HCD.
Perfect, thank you.
Anyone else?
I would just like to say that I've spoken to people that over the years have taken advantage of the owner-occupied rehabilitation funds for you re-doing, not remodeling, but rehabilitating a house, replacing roof, upgrading the electrical, fixing the plumbing sewer. And I suspect that that is something that could be popular again to have to offer as well as the down payment assistance program.
Yes, thank you. I think Merritt and I would definitely agree. But, you know, just like Merritt said earlier, when you get into building and construction, you've got the Davis Bacon requirements, you've got procurement requirements. And so it's a little too complicated at the current state of our, our city. But if we continue to have this position and we learn more, then potentially we could graduate to something like that.
Okay, I wasn't speaking of multifamily rehabbing a eight-plex. I was talking, you know, simply an owner-occupied home that someone's been in for eight, 10 years, and it needs some electrical work and plumbing and the roof's bad, you know, or, you know, just one part or another of it, just looking at that, not a large-scale remodel.
But and fourth, you know, yeah, the, the, even if it's a, those smaller things, every time you have a construction, it has to be Davis Bacon, you know, certain wage requirement. And there's federal requirements for the procurement. So even though it's a small project, each time you get a contractor for that, it, you know, it causes a lot of work.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, it sounds like the council would like to have that come back as a workshop sometime, Merritt and Jen.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So moving on to oral comments from the public, does anyone from the public on our actual Zoom have any comments or hands up? Not seeing hands up. Has anyone called Nancy on it?
Nope.
Okay, we'll close public comment, move on to the consent calendar. We have city council minutes, report of dispersments, approval of a supplemental budget request to replace damaged chain link fence at Runner Park, approval of a supplemental budget request for the purchase of a vac, vacuum truck with partial reimbursement from a United States Department of Agriculture USDA grant. Does anyone wish to pull anything?
See.
Anyone else? All right, Tammy, what's your comment?
Um, we're, they're asking for money to replace a fence that was damaged by an automobile accident. Does their insurance pay for any of that?
At this time, oh, sorry, Merritt, go ahead.
I didn't see it, Cameron. Feel free to answer that. That's your staff report. I didn't see you there.
At this time, I know that the police has reached out to the individual that did the damage. There was a police report. They were able to contact the individual. I'm not sure at this time if his insurance would pay for it, but I know they're seeking restitution, at least from that individual.
Can a city contact their insurance company? Or can?
I'm not actually 100% sure about that.
So we go through all of the processes. We, first, there is a claim that comes or an incident report that comes from the department. And then we match it with the police report. We get as much information from the individual as we can. If there is a, an insurance policy, which in this case there was an insurance policy, we'll first ask the individual if they want to pay out of pocket, depending on how it affects their insurance. And then we'll go through the agency. So I know that we have been in touch with the individual. From what I've been told, he intends to pay for the fence repair. So it has been invoiced. He's received notification of what's due. And if we don't get a straight payment, then we'll pursue it through the insurance company.
Okay, this is then what you're asking for here will, will basically be like a loan to fix the fence. And then it'll be, what's the money's gotten back, then we'll put it back in the fund?
Our expectation, yeah, our expectation is to recover the 4,625. We, we did a little bit extra fence out there beyond what was damaged for a total cost of 4,880. So our hope is to only have the city cost 255. We can't ever guarantee restitution from the party that did the damage, but our intention is to collect that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, someone wanting to motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
We have a motion in a second, Siana?
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lozey?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent? Yes. Mayor Long?
Yes. All right, moving on to city council business designation of the city's voting delegates for the League of California Cities Annual Conference. Staff report?
I'll pick that. The, the League of California Cities hosts an annual conference. And this year it's slated to take place in Sacramento from September 22nd to September 24th. And each year, the league requests that participating cities designate a voting delegate and up to two alternates. And so prior to attendance, and this has to be done by a council vote. So staff just recommends that council discuss which members might be interested, make nominations, and make a motion to approve the nominations for this year's annual conference.
So obviously it needs to be someone that is going to conference, who's going to conference this year. Does anyone know? I know Tammy and I are signed up. You're muted, Mike.
There we go. I haven't signed up, but I would like to go. Is it too late to sign up?
I don't think it's too late to sign up for the conference. I think you might have trouble finding a hotel. There will be one, just might have to, who were taxi over to the convention center.
Yeah, I would like to go.
I have a TCPW Policy Committee Meeting that goes along with that. So I would be there at least for that. I'm not sure what the, what day is the voting delegate day?
It's usually Friday. It's like they have a luncheon around 12 or 1:00 or whatever, and it happens while you're eating lunch.
Why don't you and Tammy just be the voting delegates? Or you be the voting delegate, she can be the alternative or the other way around.
And we can have how many alternates? And we can have how many alternates? Two?
Can have up to two.
Yes, we might as well go with all three, just in case something happens.
So Mayor Long is the voting delegate and Mayor Pro Tem Trent and Councilmember Lucy as the alternates.
Or Mike Johnson, if he's gonna be at his committee meeting and knows for sure he's going to be there, either one, whoever wants to.
Well, Mike stepped up first and so.
All right, let's put him down. Any, um, public comment on this item? Should have opened that first, but I always forget. All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment and we need a motion.
I make a motion to make the mayor, uh, the delegate and Mayor Pro Tem and Councilman Lucy the alternates.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Sienna?
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucy?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. All right, thank you. Our next item is to approve a supplemental budget request to use American Rescue Plan Act funds to upgrade audio video equipment in council chambers. Staff report?
This one is also mine and I put together a very brief, um, PowerPoint to go through this and kind of lay it out, hopefully in a, in a straightforward manner. We're talking about council chambers, audio and visual upgrades, um, supporting a hybrid platform and improve public access to meetings during the pandemic and into the future. So can we meet in person yet? Um, I know back in April, we talked about this and council requested that staff obtain information about hosting hybrid meetings. And what a hybrid meeting platform will do is allow for council members to meet and staff to meet in person. It would allow members of the public to meet with us. And it would also allow any participant, um, to access the meeting via Zoom. Staff is going to continue to assess, um, the ever-changing COVID-nineteen safety recommendations set forth by the CDC, CDPH and Cal OSHA. But currently the Cal OSHA emergency temporary standards still require that any employees that are unvaccinated be masked while indoors. Um, but we're going to keep an eye on this. I know there's been a lot of changes in the last week. We don't know what to anticipate in terms of the recommendations. But we do know that we want to proceed with moving toward a hybrid platform, um, one by which that we can meet, you know, in person if we want to. So we're, we're just going to keep an eye on those recommendations. Um, how do we make the hybrid platform happen? On six twenty-three, twenty-one, staff met with Access Humboldt to just determine what the necessary upgrades would be to launch a hybrid meeting. And a number of different scenarios were discussed. Um, Access Humboldt provided a quote for new hardware installation and configuration. Um, upgrades will include new cameras, a soundboard, a web presenter, new projector and monitors, as well as additional hardware and audio video interface equipment required, uh, for installation and use. The idea is to make it like a much more interactive platform than what we have right now. So if we're meeting in person and someone calls in on a Zoom platform, the idea is that the council can see and hear that person clearly and that members of the public can also see and hear that person clearly. So it'll just make for a, a smoother meeting, I think. Um, and why is this so important that we move toward this? If we can't meet in person yet, you know, why is this so important? It's important because number one, we'll be able to replace some really old equipment. So twenty-year-old cameras that don't have the quality of, uh, visual assistance that we need to really stream our meetings well for the public to consume. Um, the council chambers will have improved video feed to Access Humboldt for home viewers. And if we don't do these upgrades, it's not really, uh, going to be easy for Access Humboldt to, to grab that Zoom feed and have the end user really see a, a clear visual. So improved audio and video, uh, capabilities will meet teleconferencing requirements laid out in the Brown Act during the pandemic. Uh, it will allow ease of access to public meetings, including individuals who may not want to attend in person. And it will allow for other governmental, quasi-governmental and nonprofit organizations to utilize the council chambers and allow public access, um, during this time. So that's a really important feature. I think it's not that we don't make this available. We have, the city really hasn't made our council chambers available to other organizations. But there is a need and I know that there are a lot of nonprofit and other, you know, government agencies that would benefit from being able to use, uh, the chambers and allowing that type of public access. So how do we pay for this? Um, the city received American, uh, Rescue Plan or ARPA funds, which have specific designations. And the Rescue Plan provides that states and other governments can spend ARPA funds to respond to the pandemic and its negative impacts. Um, a majority of the funds have already been allocated to specific projects for the city. However, approximately three hundred thousand are still available for other allowable uses. And so with that, to use these funds, staff is requesting that the council approve an SPR, the supplemental budget request, to use twenty thousand dollars of ARPA funds to upgrade council chamber and audio and visual upgrades and also allow for Access Humboldt to purchase the equipment for us and provide installation and configure audio and visual hardware. And with that, I will happily answer any questions the council may have.
All right, let's open public comment in case anyone wants to call in. Does council have any questions or comments for Sienna?
Yes. I do, if nobody else is speaking up.
Go ahead.
What is the timeframe, um, for, um, uh, Humboldt or Access Humboldt to be able to purchase and put this together? And then just for clarification, if, if the upgrades were in place right now, would we be able to vote to, um, have in public meetings or hybrid meetings right now?
So Access Humboldt is, was waiting for the approval from this meeting to move forward with the purchase of the equipment that's been quoted and begin the installation process. While I don't have an exact timeframe, because it will be, um, greatly dependent upon the, the timing that we receive the equipment. So there's been some back orders with, um, different types of audio and visual equipment, computer equipment in general. And we kind of have to see what that is going to look like. Um, you know, I've made it pretty clear with Access Humboldt that our council desired to move forward as quickly as possible. So once we get this approval, they can place the orders and then we can get kind of a solid timeframe of what that turnaround would look like. To the second part of your question, if all of that hardware and new audio and visual equipment were installed, theoretically, yes, we could hold a hybrid meeting. I think what is challenging right now is that we're, I'm still grappling with Cal OSHA and the emergency temporary standards that kind of lay out the regulations by which the city is currently required to follow. And that, and that clearly states, you know, that if we have employees, um, that are unvaccinated, that they have to wear masks, uh, in city facilities. And so that is currently a limit, a limiting factor, um, in, in all of us meeting together. Um, and I don't know what that's going to look like moving forward either, if that's going to become more stringent or if it's going to stay in place. I, I know everybody has been anticipating that September thirtieth would kind of be the timeline for something changing or some indicator that, um, you know, emergency temporary standards would change, but I, I don't know that factually.
Well, in, um, Sienna, that looks like the, there are, are indications that some of these uh, restrictions might be coming back as the county already has. Um, but so if, if for instance, you have an unvaccinated, um, employees who, um, who wants to attend the council meeting, then that person would have to be masked, but they could still move forward with being in person. Or they could be, um, appearing on a Zoom meeting.
That is correct.
Okay. So that would be a choice between, you know, with any employee that we have or for that matter, any, any, um, citizen.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have questions for Sienna?
I have a quick question about, um, so is there going to be a big screen on, on the wall that is where we would interface with the public?
Yeah, my goal is to get a big screen on a rolling cart similar to the one that exists. If you've ever seen the one that lives in the board of supervisors chambers, it's kind of a large interactive screen and it's on a mobile cart. So we could use it, um, you know, if we weren't having a Zoom meeting, it could be used for presentations. And then when there is an interactive hybrid meeting, we could use it to interface with the public. And we would still have a new monitor installed, um, where the current television is. So we would still be able to see our feed, which I think most of the council members are used to seeing and appreciate, you know, being there. Um, and we did have some discussion. I don't know if it's going to fit in the budget and I don't know all of the technical pieces, but we even talked about possibly having individual screens at each council member station. So you weren't having to interface on that large device if it was preferable to have something in front of you.
Thank you.
All right. I don't see any hands up. Any calls from the public, Sienna?
I don't see any hands raised. There's no additional callers on, or in the queue.
Okay, we'll close public comment and we're ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a supplemental budget request for twenty thousand dollars of American Rescue Plan Act funds to be used for council chamber audio video upgrades and approve the sole source justification for Access Humboldt to purchase hardware, provide installation and configuration of audio visual hardware.
A second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Sienna?
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucy?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. All right, our next business item is to approve a memorandum of understanding with Bird Rides Inc. to provide stand-up electric scooter sharing system within the city of Fortuna. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Long. I'll be providing the staff report. Uh, Sienna, if I could share my screen?
You should be able to.
Thank you. So the, before you tonight isn't, is the consideration of an MOU with Bird Rides Inc. to provide scooters, stand-up electric scooter sharing system within the city of Fortuna? The council received a presentation on July seventh from Garrett Granowski with Bird Rides Inc. And what Garrett did really in that meeting is summarize the micro-mobility benefits as an alternative transportation form and the ability to provide affordable, convenient, sustainable way to travel through the city. He also talked about how they would manage that and described how they would hire a local manager to deal with wrangling the scooters, charging them every night and then dealing with any complaints to go pick them up. So a- after the meeting, what we did is we circulated the, the proposed MOU and insurance limits with our risk pool. So that our, our risk pool manager could take a look at that and propose appropriate level of coverage. So that was done. A certificate of insurance is included in the staff report. You can see there's a five million dollar level of insurance per occurrence. We also had our city attorney review and provide additional languages to include protections for the city. And so that was our, also done. And we had buy-in from the city attorney. So a copy of the draft MOU and again, the certificate of liability insurance is attached to the staff report. Some of the key points of the MOU, it's not exclusive. It's, it doesn't mean that Bird Rides Inc. is the only provider that can provide this in when the city. What we're saying is here are the, here's, here are the agreed terms for Bird providing the scooters within the city. That they've in, in, included in the MOU is that scooters will be governed, governed by the rules that apply to bikes, including our city ordinances. Riders will have to be eighteen years old or older to be able to rent them. Their service hours will be from six AM to midnight. And the city can identify areas of, say for example, if we have a problem downtown where somebody really doesn't want the scooters parked somewhere near their business, we can give them notice and within twenty-four hours, they can restrict those areas for somebody who's returning the scooter. And then also each scooter would have identifying information and a phone number. So if somebody said, what the heck is a scooter doing in this spot? Uh, there will be a number that they can call and a local manager and come and retrieve it or, or deal with the issues. In the city, we have the contact information and we're, we have a meeting set up, I believe later this week to talk with the local operations managers. We'll get a better sense of who that is and, and how we can interact with them. So some of the other key points is they're initially planning to start small. Initially, they're committing only to twenty-five of the scooters when they launch. They, they have a whole host of safety and training materials, although I do suspect that that's really going to be the safety information. It'll be included, I'm sure, in the app or whatever the rental form is, but I think the users are really going to have to seek that out. They also include a free helmet. If somebody, if riders do want a helmet, although they're not required, they can request one. And I think if they pay the shipping and handling, that Bird will provide a, a helmet to them. And I think they're one of the few companies that do that. They've, uh, agreed to indemnify and hold the city harmless and provide the insurance with the city as an additional insured. And right now it's a pretty short timeline. So this MOU will expire on January first, twenty twenty-two. We can also uh, terminate the MOU with thirty days' notice. So there's no direct anticipated cost to the city, but I expect if there's complaints that those would be directed to city hall and we, we may have staff time that's dealt with interacting with their operations manager to resolve, uh, whatever problems or complaints come to city hall. So staff's recommendation, it, it seems like there's a number of people are very excited. We haven't heard, uh, many people who have concerns that override the, the potential benefits. So at this point, staff is, is agreeable to council moving forward and recommends approving the MOU with Bird Rides and, and recognize the insurance requirements. And that concludes my staff report. And be happy to answer any additional questions.
All right, let's open public comment. Um, my one question is, why is the timeline so short? Why is it going to expire in January?
And I, I think they just proposed that timeline to go through the end of the year. I suspect that if it's, if it's again, Bird Rides is a for-profit company. So I think that if they do well and they're going to look at this as a trial period, I have no doubt that they'll want to extend it if it's a successful program in the city. So that's the term they proposed. It's not a term that the city limited them to.
Anyone else have questions for Merritt?
No, no question, just a comment. I'm excited about this. I think it'll be a, a good deal for the city.
All right, I see no one from the public. Sienna, anyone? Okay, we'll close public comment. Ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the MOU with Bird Rides Inc.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Sienna?
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucy?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Okay, our last business item is accept the receipt of the Rona Community and Recreation Park District's proposition. Sixty-eight per capita grant fund allocation authorized city manager to execute an amendment with California State Parks, submit an application for the acquisition of eight point four acres for the expansion of Newburg Park and approve a supplemental budget request for the property purchase resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I am going to have to recuse myself from this item.
Okay, you live too close?
No, my wife, um, being at my plane.
Gotcha. Okay.
Mayor Long, I have that staff report and thank you for reading that long title. As we put this together, initially, we really wanted to just accept the phones from the Rona Community Recreation District. And then we thought, okay, why do we want to bring it back and get it halfway done? So we included everything we think, we thought that we needed to do to proceed. And I just pointed out that I have our finance director, uh, he's also on the meeting today. And so he helped me, uh, put together the supplemental budget request and and weighed in on the importance of getting that done at the same time. So we didn't have to delay moving forward. So I'm going to share my screen. So again, just to, all right, let's use, there we go. Do you see my screen now?
Yes.
So just to recap with the recommended actions. So there's a lot of parts. I just want to run through this a little bit more slowly. But the first piece is to adopt the resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four. And that really includes just the piece that is required to accept the Rona Community Recreation and Park, Park District Prop sixty-eight crap, per capita allocation. And the second part is authorization for the city manager to do three more things. One, uh, execute an amendment with California State Parks to adjust the allocation amount. So we'll, we'll have an updated contract agreement recognizing the amount that we'll have in total. And then also the submission of an application for the for the the purchase of the 8.4 acres adjacent to Newburgh Park. And then approve approve a supplemental budget request to recognize the grant revenue that will be coming in for those grants as they weren't reflected in our our current fiscal year budget. And then also to recognize the expenditure for the purchase of the parks. So the city of Fortuna and the RONER Community Recreation and Park District each received 177,952 as a per capita allocation with the passage of Prop 68, which is also known as the California Drought, Water, Parks, Climate, Coastal Protection and Outdoor Acts that's for all act of 2018. The the Eel River Valley Community Foundation became the owner of the McLean campus recently, including the 8.4 acres at South Newburgh Park, intend to sell the property before the end of the year to generate operating revenue. So one of the things we've been talking to McLean and Eel River Valley foundation about is they're really trying to separate the two entities, McLean, which is more of a grant granting agency from the facilities owner, which will be the Eel River Valley Community, Eel River Valley Foundation. And so we really they they express their interest in bringing that revenue in to be able to to manage their their facilities. The city for many years has expressed their interest in acquiring the property around Newburgh Park, in particular to the south. So including this area that we're looking at. In the general plan, it's designated as public facility and the parcel in question that we're looking at acquiring is identified for parks and recreation. So it's consistent with the general plan and the city's authority. And here's an overview map. It's a little difficult to see. I'm going to use my cursor and I'll go as slow as I can, but you can see the existing boundaries of Newburgh Park. I'm kind of circling those to the to the, I guess, northwesterly side. You can see near Newburgh Road and it's bound by Ronderville Road. So the parcel we're looking at here is this entire area roughly with the projection of the easterly line of Newburgh Park all the way down to Strong Street. You see, this is actually the property line here, all the way up to Ronderville Road. And there's a small portion that's still on this triangle piece here. That portion is still on the McLean campus portion. So right now, as a part of the purchase, the city is processing a lot line adjustment. And and we'll be completing that. So the property squared off and we have a normal line approximately as an extension of the the eastern line of McLean campus. So this is the parcel we're looking at acquiring. Again, it's it's about 8.4 acres. And just a little bit more background, the city did complete a SPP, which is a a grant application to a competitive grant application to completely rehab Newburgh Park in Addis Landing. We won't know until late summer if we're going to be successful with that application. McLean, the Eel River ERV Foundation really wasn't comfortable waiting. And so they really insisted that the city move forward now. And so we don't without knowing the result of that was competitive funds, we thought it was really important to designate this and get the ball moving forward with the purchasing of the per capita funds. If for some reason we are successful with the competitive grant under Prop 68, then I think we'd have to reassess and and take a look at our escrow and see if we could find a way to to take the competitively won funds and substitute them for the allocated funds under Prop 68. And the ERV Foundation is aware of that and they're willing to work with us. So but we didn't want to wait till the last minute. Last time we were waiting back on a competitive grant from Prop 68, I think they gave us the announcement six months after they originally anticipated. So we wanted to put this in place and be able to purchase the property within the timeline that the foundation was requiring. So it did staff really does feel that it's important that we don't miss this opportunity to purchase the parcel. The acquisition of the parcels consistent with the guidelines for the use of the Prop 68 per capita funds and is supported by the the RONER Community Recreation and Park District. And in in if, you know, once we do have the purchase of this, it'll allow the city to also pursue grant funds for the development of the site. So with regard to financial impact with the city and RONER Community Recreation Districts allocations combined, the amount that will be available to the city is 355,904. We expect the total cost with title and escrow fees, appraisal updates, independent appraisal review, all the secondary costs to to be about 337,000. A lot line adjustment will be credited, cost will be credited towards the purchase price. And 310,000 of that is proposed to be funded using the revenue from Prop 68 per capita funds and up to the additional 20,000 from Measure E funds designated for the Prop 68 match and land acquisition. So that concludes my staff report, the recommended actions to and authorize the city manager to execute the amendment with California State Parks, submit an application for the acquisition of the 8.4 acres and approve the supplemental budget request that recognizes the revenue from Prop 68 per capita and also the expenditure for the property.
All right, we'll open public comment. Does anyone have any questions for merit? Hearing none. Do we have any hands up? Seeing no hands, we'll close public comment. Ready for motion.
Actually, I do have a quick question.
Oh, go ahead.
I see that we have 355 when we combined the RONER Rec District money and our money. Why 20,000 from Measure E? Why not just all of it from Prop 68 funds?
So one of the things that we'd like to be able to do, you know, RONER Rec District has, again, they're supporting the city's acquisition of this parcel. One of the things that we're hoping to do, Measure E designated our let me let me back up. Our hope is to bring back a plan for the expenditure of the remaining funds. And what we have in mind for the remaining funds, again, this will come for council approval, is Measure E designated the construction of improved basketball courts at RONER Park. They really wanted to see some physical improvements. And one of our hopes, you know, building basketball courts is also consistent with the Prop 68 per capita allocation. You either have to do an acquisition or a development project. One of the things that is you're not able to do with the Prop 68 per capita allocation is some of the annexations and revenue generation studies that are going to be required for the RONER Community Recreation District to move their pool project forward. So our hope is that the council will agree to fund the basketball court improvements that were sought by the Measure E and then use some of the Measure E funds, which are general funds and unrestricted to advance the effort by the RONER Community Recreation and Park District for the 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 studies that are needed to pursue the funding in district boundary change, potential district boundary changes for the RONER Community Recreation and Park District. So that that's our hope is, again, they they're putting most of the funds that would go towards this purchase, their entirety and 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 our hope would be that the council would want to help the rec district advance their cause and get get pool question to a decision.
Right, thank you. That's great.
Any other questions? Okay.
All right, I'll take a really big breath and then make this motion here. I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2021 dash 24 and authorize the city manager to execute an amendment with California State Parks, submit an application for the acquisition of 8.4 acres to for the expansion of Newburgh Park and approve a supplemental budget request for the property purchase and read by title only.
Second. All right, we have a motion in a second, Sienna.
Resolution 2021 dash 24, a resolution of the city council of the city of Fortuna, authorizing the city of Fortuna to receive 1,077, 177,952 of the RONER Community Recreation and Park District's per capita grant fund allocation from the California Drought, Water, Parks, Climate, Coastal Protection and Outdoor Acts for all act of 2018. Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. All right. That was a
Mayor Long, I just wanted to acknowledge that our parks director Cameron Moll has really been working on trying to orchestrate these two grants and get the resolution done and bring those forward. I forgot to mention that. So he really helped put together the draft and I kind of jumped in and assisted, but I wanted to, you know, I I and also our finance director, we've all been working on this, but Cameron really kind of got the start and has been doing a lot of the coordination. And I didn't want to forget to mention his efforts on this.
All right, thank you, Cameron. Mike. Come on back. City managers report, merit.
Okay, give me one second to pull that up. So I just had a few items that I wanted to report on tonight that have taken a significant amount of effort. But one of them, I've been working very closely with our community development department and also our consultant Plan West on the specific plan that's underway for the the Mill District. It's pretty exciting to see some planning work go into that. And and also we have some potential developments that are coming to the city at the pre-application to look at. So we're trying to act very quickly. We're trying to consider different development options that are coming our way. And I think there's some real potential in the near future to see some development proposals for the mill site. So I'm excited to do that. We're going to be do I'm going to be meeting with our consultant as well as our deputy director of community development to reach out to a few select stakeholders in advance just to get some some buy in again from key property owners around the site. And I'm excited to be working on that. Another item that I'm looking at with our city clerk and human resources director, I'm sure that the council's aware, we're seeing increased COVID numbers, we're seeing new new recommendations from county public health. We haven't seen a lot from the state level yet, but we're seeing new guidelines being issued by the CDC. So we're taking this all into consideration and then we're going to consider how the city moves forward. We're a little reluctant just to jump and to change things immediately and then wait for new rules. But we do think it's important to monitor this and we're going to be considering our you know, if we should make any changes to our COVID response policy as we move forward. So expect to see something within the next week. A lot of the other cities have gone back to mask mandates at city facilities. So that will be something we'll be considering. I've also been staying in communication with the new interim director of FBIT, Danny Kelly. Danny's doing a great job just to really understand what is happening with the Business Improvement District. And there's a number of items that the city is really interested in, particularly the audits, how they're going to track their budget. So and also I intend to at some point bring back three options for the future of FBIT that I'd like to develop in conjunction with the FBIT interim director and the FBIT board. So that effort is still ongoing. Danny's doing a great job so far. He's still getting on his feet, but he's sending out weekly communication emails and and we're having a good interaction so far. So expect to hear more back on that in the near future. And then the last one I was able to attend as well as some of our council, I don't want to say too much, but Dave Reed, our mechanic for the last 18 years, who handled our fleet, had a really nice, very small kind of lunchtime retirement for for party for him today. And it was great to see Dave taking a new direction in his life and and we're very happy for him. But he worked hard to keep the city's fleet running well. He performed preventative maintenance and kept the city in compliance with their quality regulations as well as doing the mechanic work. And I just want to thank Dave for his service and I'm looking forward to seeing our other mechanics. We have one new hire who I haven't met yet, but we've got Mike's rant, Mike Ransford, who is going to be stepping up and and filling Dave's shoes. And we really appreciate Mike stepping up and Dave for his 18 years of service. So it was nice to be able to attend that at lunchtime today. That's all I have.
Thank you, merit. Anyone have questions for merit? All right, seeing none, we will move on to future agenda items. Anyone, we talked about a CDBD workshop. Anything else? All right.
Quick question. I know it's early, but in the future, I'd like to hear an update about the the planning regarding the Mill District.
Yeah, and again, it's a very small budget. You know, I think a specific plan for a property like that would normally be about, you know, at least a quarter million dollars and we're working on a $60,000 grant that's focused on housing. So again, it's a it's a very quick effort, but I think we're going to get some great results. I'd be happy to, if you want to come by my office, give you an informal update, but we will be having you know, there's there's not a lot of public meetings. Of course, there's a planning commission meeting, a council meeting, and I think you know, one of the things we may be asking the council for is a little bit more budget to have a couple of other public meetings that was somewhat limited. So you will hear that back probably with that recommendation soon, but councilmember Stanfield or any of the other council members, if you'd like to come by and kind of get a sneak peek of what we're looking at, please feel free to set up a time with me.
All right, city council reports, Mike Johnson.
Okay, well, we have come off of our second marquee special event for the year, the Auto Expo, and it was again very well attended. Main street was full of cars spilling out onto the side streets. The drive in movie was pretty well received. The first night wasn't as well, but the second night it was very well attended. It's something to we're looking at for a next year. The show and shine really took off great this year. So we had cars all over Fortuna. And if you got a chance to see the cruise, we literally had cars all over Fortuna that night up and down the boulevard and Main Street. And I do not have a historical commission meeting this month. But we do have an HCOG meeting coming up on the third Thursday of the month. And looking ahead towards that, we did not have one in July, but we did do the executive director's evaluation and got that taken care of. She's doing a great job getting us started and keeping us on track to accomplish the many things that HCOG has to undertake. And that's all I have to report right now.
All right, thank you, Mike. No, the other Mike, Mike Losi.
The other Mike. I concur with Mike Johnson about Auto Expo. We attended the cruise on Friday night with our grandchildren and they just had a great time waving and yelling at the people as they go by. And it was just a lot of fun for them. On July 21st, we had a LAFCO commission meeting and we had a discussion of the CalAFCO Annual Conference, which is going to be in October in Newport Beach. And there was enough money for up to four commissioners to attend. But since I'm one of the newer members, I thought it best to see if a vacant spot was going to be available, but those four spots were filled up by tenured members. So maybe next year. We had a public hearing on an annexation that 53 acres at Metropolitan and that annexation was requested by the city of Real Del. And it's bordering Metropolitan Road just west of Highway 101. And that's that field out there where Real Del has the disposal they retreated wastewater effluent. And they just drain it out there. There are two parcels, both are owned by the city. But they pay annual property tax of $2,000 per year. So they wanted to annex that property so they could get away from having to pay that property tax. So the county had no objection. They only had one request, which was to include that portion of Metropolitan Road can grow to the parcel to be annexed as well. And there was discussion on that, but in the end, the that road was left in the county jurisdiction. And the annexation was passed. We did have discussion of MSRs, MSR preparations, those are municipal service reviews and status of current and future proposals. Meeting was rather short. It lasted only about an hour and a half. Then on the 22nd, next day, we had a Redwood Coast Energy Authority meeting and we had a financial risk management quarterly report. These things are just so involved. PG&E's outlook rates, they're looking down the road for 2022 have improved. So the generation rates for energy have improved the outlook for RCEA. The average energy generation rate looks to increase by only 4.2%. And I think prior to that, it was looking, it was it was going to increase by a lot more. And the PCIA rates will are scheduled to decrease by 5.8%. And the PCIA rates, it stands for power change and indifference adjustment. And what it is is a rate that everybody who is a part of the community choice aggregate, so we're not on PG&E, but CCA. PG&E has this rate adjustment that we have to pay extra so that their customers, their own customers don't pay for any items that that they don't have to, I guess. It's convoluted, it's It's convoluted, it's uh, it's involved, but. Um, our, our rates should decrease if you're on CCE, CCA. The wholesale energy prices report, it were reported to, looks like they're going to increase about ten percent over the next several months in twenty twenty-one. Primarily because of the high heat air conditioner usage and possibly increase fourteen percent in twenty twenty-two. Um, we had a lengthy discussion about energy procurement and our goal of being one hundred percent carbon free. And there was discussion about the bootleg fire and that the fact that two major transmission lines were destroyed. And it will have a direct impact on transmission and the definite need for redundancy in energy transmission. I didn't attend the entire meeting because I had a prior commitment, so. That is the end of my report.
All right, thank you, Jeremy?
So FBIT will meet this Thursday at two PM and um the FBIT board will be electing leadership that day. Um, we're really grateful to have our interim um director on, come on board Danny Kelly and he's hitting the ground running. Doing the very best he can to balance phone calls coming in and re. Restructuring FBIT and its focus. We've got a great board, lots of energy. Um, our new appointment, Emily has agreed to be secretary and we're working out some of the details for some of the other leaderships. We've got some young enthusiastic people willing to step up and participate and be part of what, what FBIT looks like moving forward, so. Good things are happening there. I have a meeting on the seventeenth for the REDEC Loan Committee, uh, that's a new committee that I joined. Um, as a business owner, not necessarily as the city council, but I knew about it because of my position as city council alternative, alternate. And then uh Parks and Rec didn't meet, but I want to give them a shout out again for phenomenal weekend of activities, accommodating all the hit and miss engines, the craft fair. All the different activities that happened down the rodeo grounds. Staff just did a phenomenal job and the committee did a great job, you guys make it look so easy and I know it takes so much effort. So I want to commend the committee and um city's support to the committee for another great event. And then um had the honor to, I think all of us did, have the honor to attend the dedication ceremony for Fire Department. To um dedicate their new training facility and more importantly, uh, even though that's really important, more importantly, the dedication of Nicholson Way to our friend Dave Nicholson. And uh Cheryl was awesome, she said that the only thing that would make that sign better is if it said Humdinger Highway underneath of it. So I just thought that was a hometown special right there. So I think that's all I have to report for tonight, thanks.
All right, thank you Jeremy, Tammy?
Thank you. Um, once again, I also wanted to say the city put on two weekends back-to-back events, I think Fortuna has some of the best events in the whole county. Our employees did an excellent job going from one to the other, I'm sure they were all pretty exhausted by the end of Auto Expo. But both weekends were a lot of fun, it was so nice to see people out with smiles on their face and actually get to see their faces. And enjoying themselves, so it was two good weekends and thank you to the city, the employees and all the people that attended. And um Jeremy made the report about the Fire Department and Nicholson Way, which, what, that was an honor for the whole council to be there. And that training center is a real asset for the whole Eel River Valley, the whole county, um, all the agencies can train together, which is extremely important as we saw this last weekend, there were two big fires. Fortuna had about a three acre fire over in the um Mill District, which we had to call in agency assist to help us with that. And then um yesterday Ferndale had one on their side, which they had to have agency assist and that one was close to thirteen acres. So please everybody be careful out there, it is fire season, things are igniting quickly and I'm hoping that. Our code enforcement officer is staying on top of around the city, places that need to be mowed and taking care of to help prevent any of those fires. And I also wanted to say congratulations to Dave on his retirement, sorry I was unable to be there, I had a dentist appointment today. But that's all I have to report and thank you.
Thank you Tammy. Um, REDEC was canceled in July, but we are having an executive meeting on the eighteenth, so I am thinking following Jeremy's loan committee meeting, there's going to be business to take care of. So um, the League of California Cities first in-person Redwood Empire Division meeting is going to be August thirteenth. I don't know if everyone has RSVP'd or got that information, but please RSVP if you want to attend. Um, I'm going to try to be on time this year and be getting some information out to everyone for Merritt's evaluation, which is due in September. So it'll be a little bit of a busy month in September with conference and added meetings for that, but hopefully we'll get that done on time this year and he doesn't have to remind us. Um, I think that's all I've got, so. Anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor, I. All right, thanks guys.
Thank you.